We're good. Hey, let's bow our heads and pray, and I have an announcement that I think a lot of you know already. But Almighty God, Heavenly Father, we have celebrated and tasted and sung and listened and read of hope this evening, and we thank you. That as your Apostle Peter once said, "Lord, to whom shall we go? You have the words of eternal life." So thank you for having fed us this way. I thank you, Lord, for the leaders you have raised up at Holy Cross, Davis and other members of the Board of Lay Leaders. And we pray your blessing upon our little conversation this evening, all for your glory and in the name of your Son, our risen Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Davis asked me now, how many of you, I'm curious, got on the Internet and watched the service from the seminary the other night? Anybody do that? Yeah, there was a handful of people who did. It's always kind of neat. I got to, I always watch it at my brother's house. He lives in Windermere. Then I hop in my car and drive over as they're coming out of church. So I got to greet all the people there. We got some fun pictures. But the Lord blessed everything we were hoping for. We had issued specific calls in the seminary, named calls, where we had called Chad and also had called Dan Kinley, and both of those were, we were given both of those candidates. I understand Chad was actually kind of nervous that he wasn't going to get called here. I had kidded him enough. I think he was already packing for Moose Jaw, Saskatchewan. But we are blessed to have gotten him here. Some of you have asked about Stephanie Kinley, and we know that out at our esteemed seminary, men are men and women are women, and they have different call services. So the deaconness is, I haven't heard it yet, but it will be a chapel sometime within the next couple of weeks. And plus Stephanie has an internship to complete with us that she will complete, I think maybe July 15th, and then that should roll. But that is coming, and we'll share more on that as we know the date, whatever. But given that we received your husband, I kind of think we're going to receive Stephanie as well. But that remains to be seen. Thank you.
Thank you. If I show a hands real quick, how many of the people out there were at one of the voters' meetings in the last few weeks? So about, maybe not quite half. I might repeat just a handful of things we said during those. And I want to do kind of a quick introduction to the board and maybe like a board 101. And then from that, we'll see where you guys want to take this and what you want to do before we turn this back over to Pastor A. But I've been on the board for a few years now and for two months. The chair, so I probably sat out there for about 15 years and had no clue what the board was. Didn't know there was a board or what they did. So I'm going to guess that there's a lot of people out there that were just like me and don't know why we're up here or what we do. But the Board of Lay Leaders represents the congregation. So the congregation, you guys are the owners of the church. And there are certain powers that you guys have and keep and only you can do, like voting in some of those call meetings that we did. So our constitution and bylaws lay out those nine things that the congregation does. And then the rest of those things, because you guys don't want to be here two, three, four times a week, every night, you guys delegate to the board. And then the board takes those and has those best interests of the organization and writes the policies and the structure that govern the leadership team here that operates. So that is our role within that. And if you guys are comfortable, you want to come up and do an introduction when I call you, come on up, I'll hand you the mic. If not, I'll say some things about you. So it's up to you, but if you want to say it. We have a board of nine members. And I look out now and I see her right there. I ended up on the board because Miss Bean, one day, I think we were like walking through the parking lot. And she said, "Davis, I'm running off my term. It's your turn." And so I said, "Okay," not knowing what, again, what the board was. So here I am. So we have nine of us, one, two, three, four, five. I see Jim back there, six. I see Brian in the back, seven. I miss people. I don't know. I miss anybody else? Is there anybody else on the board here that, is Marge here though? Right, it's here. So we didn't have that. We didn't have a handout with the board. Or I don't know if you guys have seen one of the emails that have gone out that have listed the bios. But I guess I'll do the introductions here real quick. So for the last two months, I've been the chairman of the board. I've been here about 17 years and am married to Molly out here. And I have two children, Steven and Eli, and they are going to be, I think, what, when we figure out, fourth generation Holy Cross members. So I've been at the church again about 17 years, but the family that I guess I married into has been here for a long, long time. Andy Morris is our vice president. I don't think Andy's here tonight. And I see here Pastor Moreno married us, and he's right up front here. And I got to have a nice talk with him the other night. It was great to see him. Andy Morris is our vice president, and I don't think he's here tonight. Andy and his daughter, Aaron and his wife, I'm sorry, his wife Aaron and his daughter Emerson, all attend church here, and Andy's a teacher across the street at Concordia. I see his in-laws here tonight, again, long-standing history here at Holy Cross. I think he's been here since 2023. We can pass, we've got some of these things we'll pass out later. Our, one of our newest members, Phil Harris here. Phil said he wants to talk, so I get to tell a story about Phil. Phil joined this year when we re-elected. And so I've had the pleasure of coaching middle school basketball with Phil. I'm excited for Phil to join the board. He's the secretary and the treasurer. Excited for Phil to join the board because I like that Phil's outspoken and will say what he thinks, maybe even more so than I will. So much so that when Phil and I coached basketball together in middle school, so we did fifth grade, sixth grade this year, seventh grade, next year eighth grade, I thought for sure I'd be the first one to get a technical foul called on me. But it was Phil. Fifth grade basketball. It was great. But yeah, Phil's very passionate about this. Bill Burning, and Phil, you come up and I know Bill will say, but I want to say a few things real quick about Bill. Many of you know Bill. Bill, I started watching Bill a few years ago. Bill's the one that kind of inspired me to get involved, has mentored me a little bit, been very nice. And I had the pleasure also of kind of nominating Bill to be the head elder at our board meeting last week. So Bill is not only a member of the board, but also our new head elder of the church.
I don't know if there's much more to say. So I'm Bill Burning. Most of you know me as Nancy Burning's husband. That's my claim to fame. I came to Holy Cross at about the age of 10 and have been here ever since. Have been involved in many different capacities at Holy Cross and have always been grateful for the opportunity to serve. So I'm excited about being on the board and being involved in the elders committee. And I'm excited about what's happening at Holy Cross and the opportunities ahead of us. So this is a good time to be at Holy Cross. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. In the back, and maybe he can wave, we have Brian Sikkafus by the door there. And Brian and his wife Jane, since they've been married over 50 years. And Brian's not only served on the board, but on pastor search committees and worship services. And I always appreciate Brian when we're talking about stuff in our board meetings. He's very stoic, and he thinks about things, and I'm never sure how to read him until he processes it and then he, you know, tells me what he really thinks. But he has been, he's guided us with a lot of things and always enlightens us and points things out. And I'm really glad to have Brian on the board. Next on the list, we have Jim, a former president. And Jim's been at Holy Cross and served in many capacities here, including the Human Care Board, Elder, Aid Association for Lutherans, and Thriving Chapter. And, you know, should give him a round of applause for his terms of the former president there. I don't think Marge is here. I don't know if many of you know Marge. Hopefully you do. And Marge, again, on the board. She's retired after 25 years in the seminary. And she has served not only on the board, she was our vice president up until this last year. Has served in the Lutheran Women's Missionary League since 1971. And then, two more. We saved the last two for last, and I won't forget you this time, Matty. Kelly Wejack, yeah, you want to sit, you want to come up? Yeah, come on up. Before I further the mic, this woman is everywhere. And she is such a blessing to Holy Cross. And at first, we were afraid to ask her to join the board because she's doing so many things. But like the Capitol campaign, she's always at school when I stop over in the classroom. So a true definition of a servant leader, and we're lucky to have her.
I'm Kelly Wejack. I am also a third-generation family member here. I have two boys. They're fourth generation. There's second-grade Dylan and Easton's in kindergarten. But I always joke because I was a stay-at-home mom and was kind of a, just didn't get out much. And I was looking for ways to serve, and I said a prayer like, "Lord, just, you know, give me some opportunities to serve you." And boy, did he answer in a big way. So I'm honored to be a part of this board and excited for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Matty. And Matty is a former Holy Cross Concordia Valpo too. And now she lives in the O5. So she has wonderful insight on how the church has worked and is helping us decide where it's going. And also, she is a great dog mom, so we love looking at pictures of her golden retriever because we have a yellow lab, so.
Hey, everyone. Madeline Benz. That was pretty much all I had prepared to say. That I grew up around here, so have walked the halls for many years, then over at Concordia and Valpo. So anxious and excited to be back and getting more involved. And yes, Daisy, our dog, does make appearances in a lot of things.
So with that said, we've talked a lot recently about things at the town hall and other things. And we wanted to open this up to you, right? If you want us to sit and tell you things, give you a State of the Union, we can. We can open the floor for a few minutes for you guys to ask questions. The main thing we wanted to do, though, was to explain what the board does and introduce you to the board so that as you see them walking the halls or out and about, if you have a question or concern, we want you to bring it to us. The board, under the way policy governance works, which is our structure, the board is the board. So it is the board for the organization. It is the church board, and it is the school board. We have lots of committees that help the board function. But in the two months, I guess, since I've been doing it, one of the things I think we really need to improve on is the communication and the connection. So how do we hear you guys? You guys are the church. You guys are the owners. How do we get in front of you more to make sure we're hearing your concerns? I don't think we did that well enough the last few years, and that's, you know, led to the, a few of the issues that we've had. So we can't help lead if we don't listen. So we wanted to introduce ourselves. And so at this time, I guess I'd like to ask you guys, we can just move right along into the next announcement. It's Saturday night. We can open the floor to some questions. We can tell you some things we think, or what do you guys, does anybody have any questions they want to ask or an opinion on anything? Because if not, I'm going to give this microphone to Pastor A and let him make an announcement. All right, one more thing, I guess, before we hand this over to Pastor Henry. Stand up next to me here. I think I've spent more time with this guy in the last two months than I have with my wife. But I want you guys to know what a great job, it's been about a year now that you've been here? A year and a month. He's done four years' worth of work in a year and a month. We are really lucky to have him here. He has done a great job. He's a bit of a unicorn. I can't believe we found him. He has got some unique skill sets, and he has been really fun to work with the last few months. And I just wanted to get up here and say what a great job we think you're doing. All right, well, if no one has any questions, we're going to give the mic back over to this guy.
I can, yeah, my mic's working. I just want to reinforce, before I read my little letter, a couple of things that Davis said. I have this theory that it's not that policy governance has been tried and found wanting. It is largely what it can deliver is wanted, but largely untried. We have had such wonderful people who have served in policy in our government ever since I came here. And interesting is, I think, as I've reflected on it, we kind of established a pattern that I'm so grateful that Davis and Henry's assisting in this, and you as a very capable board are going to break. And that is, it was sort of like the staff kind of fed the stuff to the Board of Lay Leaders. And so in a sense, we were kind of in both areas, the staff area where we should be and a little bit in the Board of Lay Leaders area. Even when I first came here, the ends we have, those things, our unique purpose and the impact we want to make, really the staff helped the congregation write those to a large extent. And I think the biggest change that you're going to see is, is that this group is going to be much more engaged. They're going to do it. We are not going to be enablers, which I think we have been, of a group that kind of atrophied a little bit because it didn't have to flex its muscles like it needed to. So give them a little runway. I mean, when you start doing that, it's going to be a little rough as we first start, but it will be very good. Their next meeting they're going to have with you, I think you're committed to about every month having meetings, town hall. They have dug in, and they've, we've got a wonderful financial story to tell, and they're going to tell that story. And I echo what you say also about Henry. Henry has been wonderful. I've been blessed to serve with Mark Lang, one of the finest men I've ever served in ministry with. Mark's carried to a fault, and I think almost helped the board, over-helped them, did so much of their work. And now I think Henry will help to kind of get that distance a little bit and let you guys do what you need to do and tell us what you need to tell us and truly be representative of you and to ask and to deliver the hard questions and information that needs to be so. It truly is a new day for this, and we can say and say, but just watch and see what unfolds. The letter I'm going to read for you will be on-site or on our external communications on the web Monday morning at 6:00 a.m. There are people who actually believe I hit that button at 6:00 a.m. I'm up, but I don't hit the button. It's already been scheduled. It'll go out. But I want you to listen carefully to it because it's a little unusual, but yet it's, I have to tell you, when I practiced reading it to my wife, I started to cry. I kind of choked up. It's, it comes hopefully from my heart and my head. And, "Dear brothers and sisters in Christ, my partners in the gospel, 15 years ago, you entrusted me with the privilege and responsibility of serving as your senior pastor. In a career filled with exciting and meaningful opportunities, this call has brought the deepest joy and fulfillment to my family and me. After much prayer, reflection, and conversation with trusted advisors and loved ones, and with a sincere desire to serve the Lord, His people, and my family faithfully, I have decided to retire from parish ministry at Holy Cross. The Board of Lay Leaders has proposed, and I have accepted, a two-phase retirement plan. On December 31st of this year, 2025, I will transition from senior pastor to pastor emeritus of Holy Cross. Beginning January 1st, the next day of 2026, I will continue to serve Holy Cross under a contract call. Initially, I will serve as interim senior pastor, reporting to the Board of Lay Leaders. Once the next senior pastor is called and installed, I will continue as an independent contractor accountable to the new senior pastor. My full-time ministry with Holy Cross will conclude on December 31, 2026. The decision to retire from the senior pastor has been one of the most difficult of my life. I am profoundly grateful to the Board of Lay Leaders for their wisdom and compassion in addressing the needs of Holy Cross, my family, and myself. There is still exciting and important kingdom work ahead in the coming months. God has called us to serve Holy Cross Lutheran Church and School, as it says in the Book of Esther, "for such a time as this." And we do so with confidence and joy, knowing we serve the crucified and risen Lord of the universe. In His power and strength, we face each day's challenges and opportunities declaring, "This is the day that the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it." God's continued and riches blessings be with you all in Christ. And then that big name I've had all my life, Reverend Thomas R. Allersmire. So that's my letter. I could answer some questions. I imagine Davis would. It's a little different than the average retirement letter you hear. Are there any questions that you have?
Pastor, I want to say one thing too about the announcement and your speech. But I do want to take a moment to build on what Pastor A just shared. So on behalf of the board, I want to publicly thank Pastor A for his clarity, his transparency, and his leadership in announcing his retirement well in advance. In doing so, he has given us a remarkable gift, the opportunity to plan intentionally. This early notice allows us to begin pastoral search processes at the start of '26, not in haste, but with thoughtfulness and prayer. It ensures we're not reacting under pressure, but instead leading with stability for the sake of our congregation, our school, and our staff. The structure of Pastor A's proposed contract is designed for continuity. It will serve as, he will serve as an interim senior pastor throughout the end of next year, unless a new senior pastor is installed sooner. And then at that point, he will continue in a supporting role, directly accountable to the new senior pastor, as he just mentioned. This gives us the flexibility to navigate the transition with experienced leadership at every stage. From a stewardship perspective, the plan is fiscally responsible. After retirement, Pastor A will serve as an independent contractor, allowing Holy Cross to benefit from his experience in service without the cost associated with full employee benefits. This approach, I believe, the board believes, reflects good governance, faithful stewardship, and deep respect for Pastor's ministry. Most importantly, it positions us to more confidently into the future, prepare Holy Cross as a mission-focused, united, and hopeful church. So thank you again, Pastor A. In that, we mentioned the fiscal stewardship. And so one of the housekeeping items I do want to mention before we break is, one of the things that we heard loud and clear from the voters' meeting was we needed more financial transparency. And so our next board meeting after that, we asked the executive director and his team to present us with our 2024 financials and first quarter 2025. We had a long presentation on those, and a presentation for you guys is being prepared. So our next town hall, we will confirm this, but I believe is going to be the last weekend in May. And that is going to be a financial presentation to you with slides, a, you know, and we're going to open that up and ask questions. So we should not have got to the point where we didn't have those. We can talk about why, but things have been put in place, so that will not happen again. And that, we heard you, and that data will be there. So town hall at the end of May to present the 2024 and the first quarter 2025 financials, as you asked. So more news will come about that, but mark your calendars for the last weekend in May. At this point, we can open it up to questions. If no one has any, thank you for staying. We appreciate your time. We know you're busy. Before we go, we'll ask Pastor A to lead us in prayer. After the meeting is over, if there's anyone that wants to one-on-one ask a question, rather than in the group setting, please come find Henry, any of the board members. Pastor A will be more than happy to hang around for a little bit and answer questions. We're also going to pass out, well, we'll put them in the back. We're going to have these sheets in the back as you go out. It will have, it's a front and back. It's got the board members on here. But at the top, there is a new email for the board. So if anyone has, if you think of something tomorrow you just didn't feel comfortable asking tonight, please email it to the BLL, Holy Cross email at the top. Henry's got these placed out back, and we will get that question and we'll get those answered. We've got a lot sent to us the past few weeks. It's been really great. So Pastor A, will you close us in prayer?
No questions. That's the advantage of having a meeting on Saturday night, you know? Hey, I want to just, the last couple of voters' meetings and things, the spirit felt a little more adversarial than usual. And I just want to encourage you, these folks want nothing more than to serve the Lord and to see this congregation become everything it can be. They're all people of high integrity. They love the Lord. They love our congregation. They love our school. They're opening themselves up to get your feedback. So let's have in meetings, they will work to get information to you ahead of time. And I think in turn, let's work together in partnership. And, you know, we don't need any gotcha moments at a voters' meeting or anything like that. Let's know in advance what you want to know, and we'll put it together. And I think it will really, this church has, and school has such incredible, incredible opportunities. You're going to see some things begin to break over the next few months that are just going to be amazing. Things with North Anthony, things that are happening in the school, these new church workers we have. This is a great time to be part of Holy Cross, and let's let the Lord work in us and through us to make it all it can be. And we bow our heads, close with a prayer. And we bow our heads, close with a prayer that Pastor Marino and I, this has been one of our favorites over the years. You'll find it somewhere in our hymn. Though it goes like this, "Lord God, you have called your servants to ventures of which we cannot see the ending, by paths as yet untrodden, through perils unknown. Give us faith to go out with good courage, not always knowing where we go, but knowing that your hand is leading us and your love is supporting us. And we pray this all in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen." Let's rise and sing, "Praise God, from whom all blessings flow." Praise God, from whom all blessings flow. Praise Him, all creatures, here below. Praise Him above ye heavenly hosts. Praise Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. Amen. Thank you, dear brothers and sisters in Christ. Thank you, wonderful members of the BLL. Go in peace and serve the Lord with gladness.
Thank you.
...